August the 12th, Rules and Open Government Committee, community, the whole. I see we have council members, Davis, Camus, Vice Mayor Jones. So we have a quorum, and I imagine will be joined soon by all the members. So why don't we begin with a review of the final agenda for this next Tuesday, which is August 18? And I believe the suggestion that we begin early because we've got a loaded agenda. So I'd ask the maker of the motion to consider a 9:00 a.m. start date for close session and an 11:00 a.m. start time for the open session. And I think the key feature will be all the reports and discussion we're going to have on the police item. So we'll get there in just a moment. Let's start with any changes are proposed on pages four and five, on pages six and seven, on pages eight and nine. And then on pages 10 and 11, and at sequo, we're looking at 3.7, 3.8, and 4.1. I'd ask the maker of the motion to consider that we hear all those items together, since they're all going to be closely related. So we take public comment and have council comment on them. We may have separate motions, but I think it would be important for us to consider them all together.
Yeah, Mayor, if you just, if you noticed too, we did some kind of renumbering them. So 3.7 has been renumbered to 4.3, and 3.8 is renumbered to 4.1. So what we're really talking about is 4.1, 4.2, 4.3, and 4.4 as a group of police-related items.
Okay, forgive me, Dave, I'm looking at the old online version, so thank you for correcting me on that. Okay. And then pages 14 and 15, are there any changes to those items? Here now, let's go to the public, and then we'll come back for a motion. Mr. Beekman?
Hello, thank you. If you can bear with me as I try to shift and adjust to find my speech here on my little telephone. Found it, okay. To speak to your, your, your police issues next week with the IPA.
I thank you to all the efforts of the IPA. I thank you that elected officials of San Jose and the mayor agreed to allocate what may be an additional $800,000 plus to an IPA budget to better review the processes from this protest. There's a lot of work to do. People in San Jose may have quickly understood the immediate temporary ban in San Jose of rubber bullets, but only eight complaints of rubber bullets to the IPA seems a bit questionable. A thank you to the city manager staff, those within city government, San Jose elected officials, who I am sure all worked together and contributed to these policy change ideas. I hope all parts of the city government will be working openly with the efforts and ideas of the entire community on these, on this projects. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Back to the, the committee.
So I'll make a motion to accept the agenda for August 18th with a change for a 9 o'clock start time for closed session and 11 o'clock start time for the regular session, as well as sunshine waiver on a ad sheet for a couple, several events. And Sam is the intent to have public comments on all the items in, under, from 4.1 to 4.4?
Yeah, I think the idea was to have public comment and our council discussion all on these items together. We'll parse them out for purposes of making motions, but bring it together if we could.
And does that need to be part of this motion, or is that something that you just make the decision on?
I think we need to do as a, as a committee.
Okay.
So if I could, Vice Mayor, offer also, one thing is, so heard together and last, if that's possible. I'm recognizing we only have one item after those, and it's a pretty straightforward item. So I'm wondering if we could have 4.1 through 4.4 heard together and last.
And that, that's part of the motion for to hear 4.1 to 4.4 heard last.
Didn't we have one that we had said last week was going to be heard last?
Yeah, I think that, that's right. That was the item on Prop 16, I believe.
Yes, thank you.
You're right.
So could, could we, perhaps we could say not before 3 o'clock on the police-related item? Wait a minute, now, I'm not sure we're going to have enough stuff before then, huh? We may want to push it a little earlier. If we're starting at 11.
I will offer, I will offer, Mayor, that the item on 3.6, Proposition 16, there is not urgency on that item. If we wanted to kind of put that on a different council agenda, we could. I'll just leave that for all of you to consider.
Okay. Vice Mayor Jones, I'm, I'm open to anything that doesn't force us to go to 2:00 a.m.
That's why I'm doing those mental gymnastics. Obviously, Prop 16, I know it's, it's, it's an item that I wanted to see earlier than later. And I know my colleague, Councilmember Arenas, does this as well. But I, I, I believe that the public safety issues are going to take a, a long time to, to work through. So I'm, I'm okay with moving it out till the, till the following agenda. If, unless I hear any objections, that'll be part of my plan.
Do we want, do we want a not before for the police items? Just give public some notice, a not before 2, or a not? Would that be appropriate?
Not before 2, you think, you think we'll have enough to carry us till 2, or?
I'm guessing with 3.1, we would. Another option is we could keep the, the item relating to Prop 16 on the agenda. And if we have time to do it before, we will. If not, we'll take it up after, or defer it. So we could keep it on the agenda and, and simply reflect that it would be heard.
Okay.
Either before, before the not before time, or thereafter.
I, I'd be thinking it's better just to postpone it to the following week as, as the motion currently implies.
Yeah, I'm kind of leaning that way too, Mayor, as this gets more complicated.
Yeah, okay. All right, the motion is, as it is, Councilmember Rens?
Actually, I was just gonna talk about that. So I appreciate you moving it to another agenda. I think that it, it merits its, you know, its own time and, and opportunity to have a conversation on that. And I thought we had at Rules said that this, the police items, we would have an opportunity for our, our community to contribute so that we could have it around. I thought it was around a 5:00 o'clock time.
Yeah, I mean, I would expect it's going to go, it's going to go well past 5:00 in any event, given the amount that we've got and the amount of issues. So if we set it at 5, the problem I think we have is, without, we're going to be able to get things done by midnight.
Yep, yeah.
Well, typically, a 3.1 will take us about two hours or so. So that is a 1:30, even past 2:30. So I think this week, we were on 3.1 until about 3:30, dare I say, even 4 o'clock. We didn't start necessarily earlier, but it, it still takes quite a bit of time in that. From what I understand, there's some carryover items from, from previous meetings. So I think there's going to be quite content on 3.1. Is that right, Dave, or you foresee this being a kind of a shorter report out?
I wouldn't say much shorter. There are a couple of things we are planning on connecting on. I think we've got the, the report out on domestic violence information. We want to connect with the council on the county, what the county did yesterday. So there's a few things that we need to report out on.
Well, I, I mean, I would request if we could possibly reopen comments at 5:00 p.m. and only for those folks who haven't already commented, an opportunity for those that heard us say 5:00 on Rules last week, and maybe just kept it on their calendar that way. So just for those latecomers. Would you consider an amendment like that, Vice Mayor?
Yes, I'm just doing the, doing the math in my head. I'm trying to calculate, we're just going to have to have a break, maybe for an hour or two, and then?
Yeah.
5, or how, how would that work?
Could I suggest a compromise where we could reopen it, but have the reopening for a limited period of time? I know it's common at the county, also at the state level, where they say, we're going to have public comment for one hour, or whatever it might be, and, and, and that's it. So I expect we're going to have a lot of public comment, no matter when we start. I don't mind reopening public comment. I would just like to have a confined time period so that at least we know the council will have the time to get the work done before midnight. So perhaps that's, you know, an additional hour after 5, I would be fine.
I'm, I'm receptive to that. So I will modify my motion. And Tony, hopefully you're keeping track of all this, because I couldn't, don't ask me to repeat it. But I'm going to modify my motion to extend public comments for an hour from 5 to 6.
Wonderful, thank you, Vice Mayor.
Great. All right. Any other comments on the motion? Councilman Camus?
So, so I'm not understanding, are we, are we, I didn't understand what we meant by extending public comment.
Yeah.
Are we limiting public comment for one hour? Because I'm happy with that, too.
Let me explain what I think is going to happen, how it's going to play out. Let's say we start this, this item at 2:00. We'll have staff presentation, then we'll go to public comment. If public comment is not done by 5, this whole thing's going to merge together, and we're just going to continue public comment and stop. If, if public comment is done, let's say, you know, it's done by 4:00, we'll have some council discussion, and then we'll reopen again at a time after 5:00. Reopen it for an hour for another 60 members of the community to speak, and then resume with the council deliberation so we can wrap up our work before midnight.
So, so how do we keep track of people who have already spoken? They, they might do this two times.
I suppose that's always possible. Henry's awfully good with this, so we'll ask Henry to be downstairs.
I'll bring my A-game.
There you go.
Thank you, Henry. He brings nothing left.
All right, Teddy, you're good?
I'm gonna, I'll bring my pillow and my blanket.
There'll be no more changes to my motion, because I can't handle it.
It is so determined. All right, let's vote.
Thank you.
Arenas?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Camus?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Licardo?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, great. We'll move forward then to the agenda for August the 25th. We'll ask for any changes, suggestions on pages five and six. I note that we need to add the item relating to Prop 16 to this agenda for the maker of the motion. Pages seven and eight, any changes? Pages nine and 10?
Mr. Mayor, can I note, we are requesting a couple of things back on page nine. There we are. So with item 3.6 on the commercial linkage fee, we put out an information memo today. We just need a little more time on this. So we're requesting deferral to the first.
Yeah.
And then on the, the, the item 4.1, the Police Department Preliminary After Action Report, requesting that that get deferred to the 15th. I haven't even seen it yet myself, and so this is obviously a critical document that we need to make sure, you know, really reflects our, our view of what happened. So those are my requests.
Okay. I, I know this is, it sounds like a totally unrealistic request, but I'll ask it anyway, just so I can say I tried. There is no way to consolidate this with the other police-related items we have the prior week, huh?
Yeah, I'm sorry, there's not, not, not on this after-action report. It is, it's, yeah, no.
Okay. All right, then on pages 11 and 12, are there any changes?
Mayor, item, there's, there's a hearing on, on bond, the Finance Authority. And I know that we're going to be paying a whole lot of bond people a lot of money to stick around. I don't know if we can move that to item, to, to, even before the city managers' report?
You're talking about consultants that the city will be paying, that would be sitting through our meetings?
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah. I can understand the concern. Do we actually pay them to sit there if we're on Zoom and they can check in and? I don't know how that works.
I don't know how that works. I, I do appreciate the request, though, for those two financing items, maybe to be heard after consent.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that, if, if that's a, if there is a cost issue there.
And, and as far as the Prop 16 item, we had it last on the agenda last time? Maybe we could leave it last on the agenda this time?
There'll be a lot to talk about, I know. Okay. So all things for, are make of the motion to consider. And then the eviction moratorium. Item, I expect will also get a fair amount of attention. And we have some land use items, so. I, I would recommend we have an early start on this one as well, 11:00 a.m. I don't suspect that we'll get to land use items in time for the 6 o'clock start, otherwise, so. All right, we'll, we'll come back then. And are there ad items as well? I don't believe so. So to the public. Mr. Beekman?
Hello. To speak to the eviction moratorium item and homeless plans for 2020 to 25. You know, to again, try to offer their, Santa Clara County Board of Supervisors, they had their eviction moratorium stay for another month yesterday. They did that yesterday. You know, it just, it, it appeared, it seemed to me that, you know, you can possibly do the eviction moratorium month by month to the California Rental Association. That brings a little bit more nimbleness, they described it as. But if you do that, if you're going to do this each month, can you please make it clear kind of to everybody, what are the long-term plans? Ash Cora is working on two measures, 1482, I think, and 1436, that are totally meant to help everybody, both tenants and owners with both of those items. I mean, full forgiveness. I hope, you know, I want to learn how to speak the words that community owners do not, or owners do not have to be fearful of these ideas. And it takes a lot of effort and work, but they're really, really meant to help. And, you know, his, both of those measures are working through April of 2021. That's when the emergency time period they're predicting is over with. So can you talk more in those terms, Mayor, and City Council? And just make it clear to us what we can expect? Councilperson Asparis did a really nice job. Uh, council person as far as I did a really nice job at, you know, next May is like, uh, when we can really can start to consider being more comfortable with each other and gathering together. You know, can you do those sorts of things? I know it's difficult. I hope you can, and, um, good luck with, uh, the homeless issues and working with HUD and how that all becomes clear to us, how we can all work together towards those ends. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Beekman. I, I should note for the record, Assembly Member, Assembly Bill fourteen thirty-six is actually authored by David Chu, uh, co-authored by, uh, Assembly Member Rob Bonten and some others. But, uh, David Chu's bill is one that, um, has been endorsed by, uh, uh, mayors of the nine largest cities in the state, including myself. Okay, uh, we are back to the motion, the maker of the motion. Phil should jump in.
I'll take a stab at a, uh, motion here. I'll approve the agenda for August twenty-fifth with a start time of eleven AM and moving the, um, the revenue bonds items to, did we say after three point one?
I was suggesting after consent, which is after.
Yeah.
Okay, so after consent and, um, putting the Prop sixteen item, uh, last on the, to be heard last on the agenda.
Second.
Okay, there's the motion. Any discussion, Councilman Camus?
My, my hand was up already, and I already spoke on the other.
Okay, your blue hand is now down. All right, uh, we'll vote then, Tony.
Arenas?
Yes.
Davis?
Hi.
Camus?
Hi.
Jones?
Hi.
Lucardo?
Hi.
Okay, that passes unanimously. Um, so, um, sorry, I'm just trying to pull up my document. I believe that takes us all the way down to, uh, the meeting schedules, item D, the, sort of motion to release dates.
So moved.
Second.
There's a hand up from someone identified as District Ten. Welcome.
Hi, Mayor, this is Shane Patrick Connelly from District Ten. Just wanted to, um, ask a question or oppose a thought on that last vote. You had, um, proposed to have bond council sitting through the three point one item, because consent isn't heard until after three point one. That could get expensive for the city, and I just wanted to raise that concern, as opposed to having heard it before three point one with, a, and after the orders of the day, so that.
Shane Patrick, we're just hearing comment on, on the question of releasing the dates. I, I appreciate the comment, but we're, we're actually on a different item.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. All right, uh, on the motion, all in favor?
Hi.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Um, then on to, boy, I'm sorry, I'm pointing up, here we go, under the public record.
Move the note and file.
Second.
Uh, Mr. Beekman?
Thank you. To look for my speech here, it takes me a couple of seconds to do that. To continue with important ideas, concepts and practices, I was writing and speaking about before summer break. This is from my letter to the, uh, public record this week. With local technology and broadband issues at this time, a local government and community together can make demands and work around federal mandates. How can people of San Jose, uh, government help facilitate for everyday community? How to better ask what technology and surveillance is being placed in their neighborhood? And how can San Jose City Government be sure that telecom companies are sending notifications in enough time for people to have a twenty-day field of protest? It seems time to ask how individual cities can better work towards their own ideas of improvements and the ideas of open public process. I hope city government can continue to want to always show their motions on the screen before final votes are cast by city council in the future. Thank you for this. San Jose City Government started to offer, uh, both Spanish and Vietnamese translation at the same time of Zoom. This is an important, good idea for the future of many San Jose City Government-sponsored public meetings and functions, is working out these issues at this time, that is, how to develop our better reason for future generations. To conclude, it can be an important time, everyday community can work together to address the current future of community energy and how to distance ourselves from PG&E to better develop local democratic practices with local ideas of renewable energy and positive sustainability. To conclude again, now, this is continuing the work of what can be good day-to-day ideas of city government and the community. Uh, these are the efforts that grow over time and why community is positive, open and good. Thank you.
Thank you. On the motion to note and file, uh, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Right, that passes. We're now on to open forum. All right, there are no hands raised for open forum. Oh, Mr. Beekman?
Hi, thank you. Yeah, I really, I really want to practice the idea, you know, speaking publicly about, you know, how can rental forgiveness ideas be, you know, safe for owners to understand? Because it's my real goal that owners do not threaten tenants. And, and, and people like Ash Cora and good people of San Jose and throughout the area are trying to develop systems that owners don't have to threaten, uh, tenants. And, you know, it's, it's multifaceted, how, how you have to develop those concepts to make that safe for people. And I don't have the time or the language or the knowledge and learning experience to do that, but I wish I could. But just know that I'm trying to give my heart to the idea that someone, that we're trying to develop systems around this COVID situation that nobody at the local level wanted. This is international politicking and game playing, and we're stuck with it. And I think from that, in, in, you know, the, the seriousness of, of what is needed, of housing, uh, health and, and food issues, those are the three biggies in, in our lives. We're addressing that, and I, and I, and I hope that owners can, can, can trust that. You know, there's other issues, alfresco dining and the future of transportation and broadband. You know, that's, that's hurtful and confusing, but if we work on the big three, you know, and, and really take care of those items, I, I, I hope owners can trust that and people can feel they have a safe place to be. And, uh, and, and there's a way to make it safe, completely safe for owners as well. And it's learning to trust that and learning the logic of it. I, I wish everyone luck to and good, and good skills to learn how to do that. And for the city government, for you guys to be incredibly open just to share what is possible. That's all you have to do, share the good possibilities. Thank you.
Thank you, Martha Marie. Um, we're not able to hear you at this time.
I think you are now.
There you are, yeah, there you go.
I'm using a new device. Uh, I've heard in the last couple of weeks comments about opening up meetings, and, and I have a real concern about this. And when I say meetings, I mean in-person meetings. The, the situation with COVID is so fluid. For example, today, there was just a study released about how it, uh, the, the COVID half-life in aerosol is one hour. So I understand that some folks in the community want meetings, but I'm concerned that this is going to have the severe impact on medically compromised seniors, folks who live in overcrowded conditions and are already at risk. So my understanding of what happened yesterday was the staff was directed to look at considering the county regulations, how we can open up meetings. And I'm just asking you to err on the side of caution, because what we don't need is people getting sick from COVID, because they're only standing six feet apart in a big meeting. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.